Getting everything than actually doing the job. You're spending more money.
Well, and that doesn't leave us with enough guys. So if we open a hole to do a water tap, we have to have the guys doing the tap, the dudes running the trucks, a dude flagging. There has to be somebody monitoring, Osha says so. So we have to have more guys than they're trying to give work to even do one job.
Right now, I mean, even five, it's bare minimum, doing it with five guys. We have five.
So currently, what do you have that works on water and sewer?
Who?
What? No, just the number.
Like us, there's four, there's four of us right now.
Okay, so my proposal would have, there would be five.
We only have four, we have an open position right now. We just haven't had any applications.
And so, yeah, so this, there would be five there.
Yeah, but no, I won't take that role. I'll stay where I'm at as foreman, but I won't take the director's spot, sorry.
We wouldn't have an additional director's spot.
You're gonna need a water director?
We wouldn't have any directors, is what we're saying with the restructuring.
Then what we do with the, we've got, you know, you cut the director of Public Works out, and he's the one who's been doing the master plan for water, for sewer. Years of work that have been put in, relationships built with these departments, and we literally just took out how many millions of dollars for our sewer project. Our citizens are gonna see an increase in January, keep covering that. And we're gonna cut the guy who's running that?
I would challenge that and say that consultants are the ones that are gonna...
Well, who's got the relationship with the consultants?
The Public Works, that are city manager.
So that would put more on her head?
Again, just because we're eliminating two positions, doesn't mean that those actual bodies go away. Those two people obviously can be repositioned.
No, he just said they would.
The positions are eliminated, but those actual people would not be leaving the city if you restructured the department.
Would those people be leaving the city?
That would be up to Stacy.
Yeah, so Stacy has six positions in that department. If she has six bodies currently, she could restructure those six people, and then nobody that is currently on staff would lose their job. Is that not a matter of...
So if you take a man with fifteen years of experience in that department and bump him down...
Two people just quit.
Hey, guys, I got a question here. Basically, for Kyle, I got a question here, but I want you guys to hear it. Okay, so if you're gonna cut those two positions, then why can't those two positions take over the water director and my other spot? Can it afford it in the water fund? If you're gonna do that, if you wanna take, if you wanna take two people from Public Works, why can't you move them to water where I need them?
Okay, so to answer that, I'll answer that for you.
Cool.
So my budget changes the water fund revenue, the water fund net, from a negative three hundred and something thousand to a negative two hundred and something thousand. So if we made those changes which brought the general fund to zero, increased the garbage fund from negative eighty to plus twelve, uh, eighteen, sewer's already in a good place, but we could afford to have a...
Why can't you do that, because it'd be split between water and sewer, them too?
I would be fine with that.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't wanna see anybody lose a damn job. I don't, sorry if I'm getting upset, but I don't wanna see anybody.
But the way it sits right now, two people just quit. Those are the two positions that would go away. So everybody that's currently employed would be restructured and still have a job.
No, that's what I'm saying, no, I'm just saying, I don't wanna see anybody, so if we can do that...
We currently have two...
Positions are, not people.
We currently have two proposals that eliminate two Public Works positions. So I don't get...
No, no, I'm just saying, I mean...
You said that you budgeted the two highest paid...
Basically, those two, obviously, if we didn't replace them, it's not...
No, I know, but if they wanted to cut them out of Public Works, and we moved them both to water and sewer, cover them, right? So why can't we do that?
We're not eliminating your position, nobody from water's going to either.
No, I'm talking about the two from Public Works. Because we're already so limited on Public Works. We still, we have to stop in waters and go help Public Works after hours, or catch up on trash, or to help with streets.
What two positions are vacant right now?
On what?
Two basic, just Public Works laborers, correct, is what's...
There's trash.
Oh, one trash.
There's, actually, I think there's a lot in Public Works, really. If we wanted to be where we were at, I think we're missing like three spots, really.
Okay, so one, three Public Works and one water unit are coming. Okay, so technically, we would need to hire still two people?
I think right now, you got building maintenance, you got one guy.
Jason put a... Aw, man.
So you got one guy doing building maintenance. You've got Thomas. Coco, come here, because I don't remember all the guys, because I'm basically dealing with mine. You got Thomas and, I don't know who the other one... Well, Jacob's building maintenance, which is Public Works, really. You got Thomas, who's the other one? There's only three, right? Or is there only them two that are actually Public Works that do that stuff? Or Steve?
We got General, we got Steve.
And Steve.
But Steve's on trash now.
So those are the only three that are technically Public Works, because the other ones are streets, which you got Eric and Peyton. And then you got Jason, who's leaving, but anyways, and G on that is trash.
Okay.
So that's it.
We lost Travis on the trash?
Yes.
How do we function with less in Public Works? And I'm talking about the whole, you know, as a whole. We see on a routine basis, these guys covering for each other. The guy that, you know, sewer hops on a trash truck, or water hops on a... If this is what we're doing now, we're already running bare bones. How do we do this with less?
We can't. And the fact is that we've heard dog talk nonstop about how these guys are lazy, that they're standing around, that they're going to the family dollar. I'm sick and tired of it, I've been out there with these guys. They're getting wet, they're getting in holes, three feet deep in water, increasing cold temperatures every single week.
Most of that.
Every single week. No, all.
No, absolutely will one hundred percent disagree with that.
Oh, yeah, is it just Public Works that's...
No, there's, I can, there's at least three that I can, that I...
One worker, the manager, the manager.
Stay away from anything that touches...
So my question is, there's two vacancies, whatever departments they are. Can the city function without those vacancies being refilled?
I don't think we can. I mean, I know...
Your departments that are missing the two. Can they just be left vacant? And you can function with that? We were asked to do that in order to be able to help with the budget. So we're not hiring those positions right now. But that's gonna take away from our streets position, and it'll take away from anybody cleaning curbs and gutters. Anybody that's doing parks, working on cleanup, city cleanup. We're constantly, every day, getting calls that we're cleaning up alleys and trash, and things that people get thrown everywhere, you know? You start cutting too much, and none of that's gonna happen.
You need to come to the podium, so everybody can hear you.
Well, and these guys are at two AM and they're freezing cold, trying to cover stuff, you know?
There's also people driving around town doing nothing all day long, but nobody says anything about that.
Okay, now back to Michael, now we're going back to first thing, let me go around.
The two vacancies, I don't know what departments or whatever, what their positions. But can the city function without those beings? Not as efficient. It could function, but not as efficient. It won't be as efficient, I understand that. But everything's gonna have to drop a little, because we're hurting, the city's hurting. Some... It's gonna have to turn down some services that we do now for citizens, in order to be able to make that happen.
Well, if we need to do the things that actually matter, instead of going around and picking up leaves, and going around and doing things that really aren't making us money, then maybe then everybody needs to be more efficient.
How does Public Works make money?
Be efficient. Stop wasting gas, stop not doing any, stop having people just drive around.
Are you a city manager?
No, I'm not.
So let's talk to the attorney about some of your comments you guys are making tonight. About removing employees, about different things. You could suggest stuff as far as the budget goes, but you cannot suggest removing employees.
I've specifically said that we are not specifically getting rid of employees. Positions are being eliminated, and things are being restructured. That is all I have said all night long.
Just to make it clear, any of these, we would be allocating the budget. We'd be allocating budget, it would be up to Stacy.
Stacy would make all decisions. Nobody up here is saying anything about that.
We've already heard of three, six, seven, nine. We've already thrown in sort of nine cuts in the budget.
You did.
No. You just accused me of doing something.
No, I don't wanna be attacked by you, so just keep quiet until we're done. Till the adults are...
Why don't you go sit down while the adults up here talk?
Ms. Reese, you're done. We're not gonna recognize you right now.
Okay, well, they called me up, not...
Okay, thank you.
I was sitting out there.
And you're not recognized by them.
And you were talking back there, and we wanted to hear what you had to say. We're done recognizing...
We don't recognize Nicole screaming Nicole either there.
I don't recognize you, Nick.
Good, I don't. Look, so looking at yours, I don't understand how this works. If you restructure it the way this piece of paper says, you wanna, you wanna move seventy percent of the revenue from that one percent streets sales tax that the citizens voted on to fix the streets? You wanna move that to cover salaries of our streets and maintenance department? Which leaves us, again, still not doing the streets, which is what the citizens want.
Is it legal, Kyle?
It puts people cleaning the streets and maintaining the streets the way they should be. Maybe actually somebody out there with a shovel cleaning the gutter, like I saw Thomas doing out here the other day. Because that's what they should be doing. People actually doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Is this a legal move? Can we use these street funds that are dedicated?
I don't believe, I don't believe that it's... Is, is in conjunction with the true intent of what the capital, this one percent sales tax...
Dan, would you like to weigh in? This is a legal question.
Yeah, sure, George. For some reason, the sound just kinda went down a little bit.
The question was, can we use the one percent sales tax revenue dedicated to street improvement as a way to fund salaries in a restructured department called the Streets Department? I have JR saying no, but we have an attorney on the line, so let's hear what he has to say.
Yeah, no, I have taken a look at that.
But we started an announcement today.
Yeah, I have taken a look at that ballot measure. I think we have to be careful, especially if this is something that was voted in by the citizens. And it looks like it's very specific to funds used for street improvements. So I think, I think we would run into issues if we were moving those funds from, for that specific purpose into a general fund.
So now, just to give some context, there's a few things. What it says is one percent sales tax for streets, sidewalks, and other physical improvements. This was passed in 2017 when we had Streets Department. If you look, if you look in the capital improvement line item, there are line items, existing line items from previous years that say streets maintenance salaries, there's line items there. So what I have, what I have seen happen is less of this funding has been, less of these improvements, streets and sidewalks improvements have been done in-house, and everything pretty much a hundred percent was moved to contractors. But there is a line, there's a line that says in-house slash contractor. But the decision has been made over the last few years to sell all of our equipment, to take away our capacity to do these improvements ourselves, take away these jobs from our city, and give them to a contractor. So this is gonna be a long discussion, so if you can pull it up, Dan, you can find the wording of it.
Yeah, actually, I'm pulling it up right now. So let's see, so it says, use to continue to repair streets, sidewalks, and other physical improvements in the city according to the city council approved repair schedule. Do we have a repair schedule still? I mean, I know this is back in 2017.
Yes, so the repair schedule currently has a few streets that are priority, and then sidewalks that are the upcoming priority.
Let's see, shall be used to repair streets, sidewalks, and other physical improvements in the city. Tell the city to increase the city sales by five point percent. Increase its sales to actual ones. The increase shall be used to repair streets. I mean, the actual, the language doesn't go into, you know, quite honestly, a lot of detail as to, as to what, use to repair streets, sidewalks, and other physical improvements in the city. But I, I think we just, you know, I think we have to try to stay as close as possible to, to that. Repair streets, sidewalks, and other physical improvements in the city. And I guess what is the proposal to use that, those funds, and put them towards, is it salaries, or what is it actually going towards?
It, it would be some salaries. It's not covering everything, but it's, it's covering some of the salaries, and then some of the supplies, materials, equipment.
Yeah, I think, I think probably, you know, supplies and equipment might fall into kind of the repairing of streets and physical improvements. I think it, you know, it might be a little difficult to, you know what I mean? I get it, it's a little unclear with the language, because it doesn't really go into a lot of detail, but it might be a little difficult to kind of stretch it to salaries of...
Dan and council, I don't know if we've all heard the same thing now, but we, what was stated is that if sold all the equipment and lost the capacity to do that street maintenance.
I'd like to see that verified.
But if that is the case, then creating a street department that does not have the capacity to do the job that the funds are being delegated to would also be another material misrepresentation of the department.
And every time we've tried to buy that equipment, we've been voted down, but it's two people who are currently against this, the Public Works Department.
Yeah, and I don't agree. I think this would get us in a position to where, they haven't been focused on that. They've had to be focused in all these other areas as this general Public Works Department. So this would allow them to focus on streets and maintenance. This would allow them to begin building capacity. This covers some of that salary, this covers equipment, it covers supplies. And then they start, you know, rebuilding that capacity for us to be able to do this, more of this in-house.
The idea that we're gonna take money, work on Public Works, and see more roads fixed is not plausible.
We've had this fight multiple times about the same one percent. We've talked about, you know, buying a paver, buying a reclaimer, buying a street sweeper, and we don't have money, we don't have money, we don't have money. Now you're telling me those same funds are gonna not only fund somebody's salaries, but it's gonna help us build? How? There's no money there to build if there was no money there last year to buy equipment?
Because that was last year, and that was...
Well, that's last year, it's the same amount of money, we know what the one percent is.
So with the restructure, that changes things.
Yeah, seventy percent of salaries, it's right here in black and white, sir.
We delegated all to repairs last year to an outside contractor. All four hundred and fifty thousand got delegated to an outside contractor last year.
Can we talk about...
All of it.
Which, so...
Everything.
So that money went to sidewalks, which, if we're gonna talk about outside contractors, and you're starting to make things personal, that could get interesting, huh?
What do you think you're gonna, you wanna take the low blow, Nick? Go for it.
Mr. Mayor.
Not sure what you think, I'm benefiting in any way from that, so...
I didn't say you were benefiting, I'm saying you're claiming other people are doing things that are improper, and there's no grounds for that.
Who did I say was doing anything improper?
Order.
So I guess what I would, I would say, Mayor, is that I, I'm totally giving where you're coming from on this. I think the language, though, is just kind of ambiguous enough that I think there might be at least maybe a risk in allocating it for, for, you know, things like salaries. And I guess that, you know, we didn't wanna add any of the taper violation. So I guess I'm just kinda taking the conservative approach.
When I look at that one percent sales tax, streets, sidewalks, other physical improvements, when I look at the, currently, that's coming in under capital improvement funds. When I look at expenses of capital improvement funds, I see a line that says, street repairs in-house or contractor. And that's where we've been budgeting all of this too. It just has happened to all go to contractors, and then being done in-house. So this, this restructure would change the way that we approach those repairs, and it would give us the funds to focus on it. It would save programs, it would save positions, and it gets us a balanced budget, it gets us a lower deficit in water, and it gets us a huge surplus in sewer, and a surplus in garbage.
We also have an outside attorney that we all agreed on hiring, who's unbiased and impartial from out of the city, saying that it's not a legally sound argument that could possibly violate taper laws and open us up to lawsuits from each and every citizen on authorized tax.
And again, I don't believe it's in the true heart, but we were meant, what we meant that money to be.
So here's, here's my, so it's what, four hundred and fifty, four hundred and ninety a year, right?
Four ninety.
Four ninety, okay. That doesn't buy us one piece of equipment, okay? Let's be honest. We've brought how many pieces of equipment to this street right here, and looked at them over the past two years? That doesn't buy us one piece of equipment alone, let alone covering everything else. That one percent goes back on the ballot next year. You really think the citizens are gonna wanna approve that again if they're not seeing? I mean, you're talking about rebuilding a department, which is a great idea. I'd love to have a streets department here. I spent a lot of time talking with those guys to CML conference about some of the equipment that would be amazing here. But four hundred and ninety thousand dollars doesn't go anywhere when you're talking reclaimers, paving machines, asphalt. I mean, just the material to bring that down. The reason this was done, in my opinion, over the years, is that our equipment wore out. It got old, which happens in these small towns. And we ended up having no other choice but to bring in other people to do things. I was not always a hundred percent on board with who we hired to do things, but that's irrelevant, because of the cost of things. You know, it costs a whole lot more to bring people from somewhere else. That's neither here nor there, because that's no longer open. So we're gonna have to figure something out. But I don't understand this restructure in your mind on such a small amount of money. But yet you still wanna keep other departments that aren't, it doesn't work out, man.
Because by doing this, it allows us to refocus on streets, sidewalks, and improvements.
But it takes all the focus away from other stuff.
And we have a team who is dedicated to that, so that we're not focused on all of those other things. So I think we got to here because Thomas asked, you know, if we could kind of start to hear what my version of this is. So I think that, that covers it. Mines is a restructure of Public Works. We have dedicated streets and sidewalks. That allows us to cover those expenses with some of the one percent sales tax. And if we were to do that, there was a line here that said that it would be a new line that would be moving that over from capital improvements.
So with that, let's, let's regroup and say the, I'll call your argument the no argument, since it's not the city attorneys. Knowing that we have already said no to removing three fifty-five, four fifty-five from ambulance, how much is your budget proposal in the red? Because it's, it's gonna be in the red by six figures, which means your budget is no longer solid.
But neither is Kyle's.
No, it is.
No, it isn't.
It's not, it's already...
Well, if we, if we, if we were to approve it as red?
No, I think I'm good, because I've got the four hundred... If we keep the four hundred thousand dollars in revenues, and keep Dwayne, the deployment expense, like we said, I'm still pretty bold for... Not exactly, but I'm...
We're still in a better spot.
No, deployment cost going up, if we increase the deployment cost, it's gonna put us in the red yet another hundred thousand dollars. So between, between the ambulance and deployment cost going up, we're talking to which, several hundred thousand dollars. Because those are increases in budget and not increases in revenue. Like, if you, if you do that math, divide by an increased employment cost as we voted on, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna increase.
Yeah, Mines, Mines would be off. Mines was saving positions, removing the ambulance, and then this other restructure.
Does anybody wanna revisit ambulance at this point? I think maybe we're starting to get an idea of how difficult this is.
I'd rather revisit Wildland.
I think it's a non-starter for too many people.
I think what Kyle brought us tonight, before we started messing around, words.
I would absolutely vote no if you want to go Wildland, just like you'll vote no if you wanna keep it. So there's a stalemate on that, so...
It's not I, Stacy and Kyle brought this up. This is a city manager form of government. The city elected us to hire a city manager. And for Christ's sakes, she's the best city manager the city has ever seen. She works her ass off, day and night. She spent the last four months working with every single department, and she did everything she could to save as many jobs as she could, and help as many people as she could. And the idea that, that she has this vendetta against the Wildland Fire Department is complete.
Nobody thinks that Stacy has a vendetta against them at all.
So you think I and Nick control what Stacy does?
No, we think you and Nick and Kyle all have a vendetta against the fire department. If you want me to be completely honest, I think you and you two would like to make them go away. And don't give a crap about what public safety happens.
What are your comments have to do with the fire?
You and the Public Works Director and a few other people in this town have a whole vendetta against plenty of other people. You, and you, and Rick, and Tom Martin, and you two, all of y'all.
Right of order, victim.
This is why they don't have to put a window when y'all go there.
Oh, it's pretty much... I don't wanna see a single person cut from any department. At least the whole fire department.
I'd like to keep everybody and hire more.
Oh, there's a few I'd love to see fired.
Well, we, we, uh...
But for you to go away, you'd hate it if somebody treated your kids like you treat me.
You know, all the comments being made up here makes, I'm embarrassed.
Yeah, that's damn right.
I'd like to revisit and make another motion that we approve the budget presented by Stacy Malinsky. It is financial director, city... Okay, I'll make, I'm making a modification. I'm making a modification. I would like to make that exact one with one modification, that the museum's budget is cut by fifty dollars. That's a modification, it's a new motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second from Martinez.
We're voting on it.
He wants to pass this budget right here that cuts Wildland Fire, and...
The budget that Stacy...
It cuts Wildland Fire, three fire department people, one EMS, two Public Works, reduces the library, and cuts two VD.
And it saves lives.
It doesn't save lives, it actually endangers plenty of lives.
We have a motion in a second, let's call the vote.
Barone?
Totally embarrassed by this, totally frickin' embarrassed. People are... No.
Martinez?
Yes.
Mosby?
No.
Roberts?
No.
Mullins?
Yes.
Mayor Gudleay?
No.
It's not, motion fails four to two.
Well, then I guess we should just play federal government shutdown, because we're never gonna get anywhere.
That's the path that we're on.
That's what we're looking at. You know, this, this isn't personal.
JR, you can't hurt the conversation at all. What do you wanna say, please put the microphone?
It's a question.
We don't have answers, but we'll listen to the question. To ten.
I don't know.
It's to ten, the fifteenth.
Second reading has to be done the fifteenth.
Well, we have to do first reading.
Yep, chairman adopted the question.
We have to approve it today.
Again, I'll, I'll say, I presented this to you, I presented an option that gets us, gets us a balanced budget, and improves other enterprise funds.
Well, let's just see where we're at. I make a motion that we approve the presented budget by Mayor Gudleay.
I'm not sure we legally could do that. Would somebody like to, would somebody like to second a taper law violation?
I'll second Councilwoman Roberts's motion. Call the vote.
Martinez?
No.
Mosby?
No.
Roberts?
Yes.
Mullins?
No.
Mayor Gudleay? I'm sorry, Barone?
No.
Mayor Gudleay?
Yes. That motion dies four to two.
Okay, so we can continue going down the line items?
It's the only way we're gonna get anywhere, because we're very split. I have no problem acting like adults when everyone else acts like an adult. But apparently, other people are allowed to attack people, but I can't say the same thing to someone else.
I've never said a word that can attack me.
No, no, he can attack Ray, but I can't push back on you guys. What's the difference? He just said we should fire Ray. But I'm not allowed to push you guys and ask the hard questions. I don't see what the difference is.
You basically accused me of conspiring with people.
Oh, I, I fully believe that you have a vendetta against the fire department.
Order, order, please.
Wholeheartedly, fully believe that. I wouldn't have said that maybe six months ago, but now I've wholeheartedly believed it.
I'd like, I'd like to recognize, if you'd like to come up and share.
Can I make a motion that we sell this footage to MTV and try to fix the budget that way?
MTV went out of business this last year.
Reality TV show, somebody.
I'm Brittany Chamberlain, I'm a nurse practitioner over here at Radiant Health. I just have a few questions, just to try and understand a few things. You mentioned that the streets had to get rid of all their equipment because it was so ran down that they could no longer function with it, is that correct?
I didn't, but I think someone up here did.
It was something to that.[1758.04]
Something to that degree.
Yes.
So what's our plan if our ambulances get so ran down that we can no longer meet the public's needs? My understanding is there's also the Osborne Center. I've had several requests to write letters and it sounds like these patients, they're coming there, have significant health and or mental. So that my understanding is that's gonna increase our ambulance um call volume, correct?
Does EMR service here still?
EMR is more of a transport.
Yeah.
And my understanding is that they do serve the other communities, but at a contracted price. So what is that contracted price? That's gonna be taking away revenue and yet we're also gonna have to be paying them to meet things that we cannot provide our own community. You know, so as a nurse practitioner, my concerns are my patients, you know? I've been a a community member for many years, like Gruben Fowler. I've been in the Arkansas Valley. I've been on in several different, you know, realms and whatnot, but my thoughts and concerns are my patients and my patients' families. So when I make a call to 911 or I make a call to wherever, I want to know that my patient's taken care of. I want to know that if it's my child, my child's taken care of. If it's your family member, your family member's taken care of. And how are we gonna avoid, you know, I mean, this equipment, whether it's out on a deployment or if it's serving our community, you know, all these things are gonna be needing to be replaced. And with the inflation, if we sideline it now, where are we gonna be in five years from now? We have no choice.
To 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 sort of touch on everything, um, where we're at right now, we have not cut ambulances. So those ambulances are still gonna be purchased. So to address that concern, your concerns are valid. We appreciate your comment. But as as it sits right now, the way that we've amended this is that we have cut ambulances.
And then my other question goes to Chief Ray. My understanding is some of the revenue made on um the deployments and stuff has been used to purchase equipment that also services Rocky Ford. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So sometimes, like when they go out on these deployments, that money is actually being used to to build their fleet here that also is gonna serve the Rocky Ford community. Is that correct?
It's substantially more consistent.
Sort of.
Sort of.
The revenue comes in and goes into the general fund where it goes is determined by this budget.
But does that improve the fleet that's serving Rocky Ford?
Rural Fire. Yeah, so the uh rural fire protection district is that that's where it benefits from because they receive the um the income regarding the equipment that we use of theirs to go out on fires. And we were able to purchase a brand new truck, the 2023 International through the Wildland efforts. And that truck also services the city, uh, provides service to the city of Rocky Ford.
So would that be possible without some of the deployments?
No.
Would we be able to, because the same issue that we're seeing with the ambulances is also gonna be the same with fire trucks, right? You know, when we think back, how many years ago was that when Rocky Ford? And we just went through a state survey. The state came into Radiant Health and looked at everything. And we had to make an emergency disaster plan. We had to go on to, I think it was the EPA, EPA's website? And it listed the top 10 risks for our location in Rocky Ford, Colorado. And wildfire was one of the things that was listed. You know, so if we look at the fire land or the fire trucks that are there, you know, we learned from 2017 when we sold all the the road and whatnot, all that equipment.
Yes, your your concerns are absolutely valid and that and that's why this is such a difficult decision for everyone up here. The the real crux of the problem is that if we keep everything we want, it's illegal. We have to run black by law. So that's where the crux of the problem is. They can't all stay.
Can the ambulance in our grant process, because a lot of times that's how a lot of, like even my rural health clinic, not my rural health clinic, we get a lot of things to grant. So if we can the grant, does that make us ineligible to apply for these different things and?
That risk is there. Well, it would be, yeah, it would be a movement at this point.
Cut Peter to pay Paul for this year, but then what about the next five years? What about the next 10 years? What about?
I mean, you can say that about what we've done with water system over the last 40 years and I mean, what we've done with the sewer system. I mean, nobody's happy that that all of the citizens' rates are going up by forty dollars a month. Again, in one of the poorest communities in Colorado. And eventually, we're gonna be looking at replacing all of the water lines. It's not gonna give choice. A quarter of a billion dollars.
Is there grants available for that?
Yes, but not a quarter of a billion dollars. We're talking.
But if we revoke the these two ambulances, will that make us ineligible for for grants for the water projects?
That would be a different.
It probably is from a different.
Yeah, that'd be a different risk. It's a different source, but it's at the end of the day, it's still gonna it's still gonna cost revenue to do that. And for something like water, we're talking 95% match or 90%. My point is is that it's not that we're robbing Peter to pay Paul.
Well, I know, and that's a poor representation, but I'm like, I'm doing something.
Entire city is Peter.
For something today, but it's gonna really end up crippling us, you know, in the years to come.
So that's where we landed with the sewer thing is we got a grant that covers any overages. But the majority of that project is a loan that we are paying back with that eight dollars we added to your bill this month, this past six months, and we're doing it again January 1st. And will for the next three years following that, that forty dollars a month after five, you know, five years that everybody's gonna be paying is everybody's piece of the pie to that loan. So we're not necessarily, we got some grant money for that project, but it's nowhere near what's funding that project. That loan is what's gonna fund that project and every one of us has to pay for it.
The eight dollar a month fee had to be put in.
Yes.
Because we had to have the money upfront before they would start the project.
So and that's how the that's likely how this sewer water project will have to go, is we will end up with a multimillion dollar loan.
We're talking quarter of a.
Quarter of a billion dollar loan to cover that along with possible grants if they're even there. So we wish that we could get grants to cover all of that stuff, but they're just not there.
My point is simply that the infrastructure and everything and every single department in the city is suffering. It, I completely agree. I wish we had, I wish we could tell the fire department, we're hiring more people. Hell, we're gonna get a helipad and we're gonna have life flights on. I'm serious.
I know that we're a rural area.
And that that's not even, that's, I'm I'm serious. We're a rural area. We don't have the best hospital in the world. I love everything they do, but it's not Denver. Um, they do not have the same machines and the same capability. And we do lifelike people out of there, I believe, but it's not, we we simply have to make decisions about what can we do and what can't we do. And yes, we can do something here.
The care that these guys give to our community, you're not gonna find in a lot of other places.
I don't agree with you. We have an amazing team.
And if we start crippling them, then it's just gonna, because what that is, is gonna transition to.
I I agree with you there, but if we keep the ambulance, which I'm I'm in favor keeping, because I mean, you know, we have to, we need to have the response. But we have to give up something, and I'm sorry, but the way it's looking, we're gonna have to give up positions.
Yeah, we don't have anything else to.
We're we're gonna be running short for a year or two or whatever, but I mean, everybody's gonna have to.
The auditors were here just a couple of months ago and they explained, I said, the auditors were here just a few months ago. And they explained to us that if we stayed on the path we're currently going, we're looking at two, three years and we're bankrupt and we can't sign anybody. Sixteen months. How do we, how do we use that? We're we're looking for places to cut. We're looking for things to to downsize. And the only thing out there is positions, is salaries. None of us want.
Would be amazing.
Order, order.
No matter how much we argue with each other and we and we shouldn't, you know, I I shouldn't, none of us should. This is, it's it's passionate because this is numbers. This is hard. None of us want to make cuts. But what do we do? Where do we come up with the extra, probably two million dollars just to make it, to keep what we have?
I just want to build off what Brittany said. I think that it's important that we brought up the apparatus. We're talking about the ambulances. My bigger focus is we have two four-man crews and one three-man. We're presenting to remove three from fire and one from EMS. That's an entire shift out the window. That means any back-to-back call isn't happening. Any transfer isn't happening. Any mutual aid, slim chance it happens. So we just need to look at the big picture. If we're looking at uh public service and public safety, we need to focus on keeping the personnel. There is tough decisions, but if we lose four people, that is an entire shift.
Then where else would we cut money from?
I don't have the answer for that. But what I would say is we need to stop focusing on revenue when it comes to life safety.
Agreed. One hundred percent.
We legally do not have that trust.
Somewhere you're transferring, I'm sorry, with AMR, you transfers.
AMR, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you right now, AMR has been, um, the reason why we're having to do the IFTs is because AMR doesn't have the capability to keep up with the needs of the communities within the Arkansas Valley. AMR is so busy that they're having a hard time keeping up with their own calls because they're just getting slammed. We're having to take, the reason why we're taking more Manzanola calls is because most of the time Medtrans is out and Medtrans is contracted with Manzanola to do their 911 calls. So Medtrans hasn't been able to fulfill that 100%, so guess who has to fill that gap? We do. So AMR can't even fill the the needs of the community based off um what you just said. I, we just can't use that. Because they're already so busy, we're having to fill in those gaps as well.
I I just want to piggyback on that. Um, I'm Daniel Senna Steven. I'm the volunteer captain. I get all you guys' input that it's very stressful. Um, coming from volunteer, we have put in volunteer positions. So we built that up. It's hard for us to show up, just like it's hard for everybody to show up, right? The other part I wanted to do is, um, somebody brought up AMR, they were back on rate, you know? They're already covering Manzanola. They can't handle Manzanola. Handle's not the right word, but they're having trouble handling that Manzanola area anyway. So like if if we cut too far on our side, they they can't come in and handle us and take on something else. Manzanola runs, but I mean, they run, we would just take all of them.
For ambulance calls, they're about 50 to 60 calls and AMR can't even meet every call need for Manzanola. And we're, I mean, we're in the hundreds. We're having to cover Manzanola. We never declined a call to Manzanola.
We've covered over 50% of our 2025 calls. And this is gonna sound heartless, but why is that our problem?
No, I'm not saying this is our fault. The the the. I'm just trying to get the point that AMR, he brought up AMR and using AMR to help with our response, it can't happen because AMR is busy too.
Which means that, but that gives them a perfect place to expand their business.
They they already cut last year. They cut.
Well, that's on them.
So you're you're talking about expanding a private company over your own government.
Well, currently, we're not doing a very good job of keeping with our budget. That's what I'm looking at.
All right, thank you guys for my.
If our budget was better, I'd say expand the ground by, let's buy a bunch of new equipment. I love it.
All right, let's um get back over to Finance Director and see if we can work through this some more.
Where are we? Well, all we've agreed on is, all we've agreed on is as it relates to Wildland is to tie um revenues to deployment costs. So I guess we're at a at a stopping point there. It's just, it's just at what it is, which would be $400,000 because it's not gonna change, right? And then revenues would be tied.
We voted on both proposals and both failed.
The only thing we voted is that revenues would be tied to 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 expenditure compared to.
Within Wildland.
Within Wildland.
Which leads us.
So that would make a line item adjustment of an increase in deployment cost and then we.
Which gets us basically to our revenues.
Right.
We take past year's revenues and multiply that to try to get that.
No, that's it. No, what we would do is we'd take the 400,000 revenue that's projected and then we take uh deployments and make their match so that we define.
It would be eight, it would be eight, it would be 0.8% of 400,000. And that's, and that's what, that's.
It's the reverse of it.
Right, yeah.
It's essentially just deployment costs go up so that it makes.
Whatever they have revenue, it goes up.
So that it's.
Or whatever that revenue is.
And let's just go on.
Well, we're we're now getting into departments and expenditures. With the exception of the salaries and the positions that I've discussed, there's very, very few changes within this budget because we've pretty much cut everything that we could have. Everything from last week is still pretty, still good within my budget. As far as salary, or excuse me, Finance Administration, Legislative and Judicial.
So let's let's start there on next legislative. Um, I think that one, it looks like you pulled over the same number. So what I proposed was, oh wait, is it? Yeah, yeah, okay. So what I proposed, and this was kind of part of the overall was um a reduction in training and travel expenses. So on this one, I cut councils from the 7,000 down to 500, um, materials supplies from 600 to 500. That would be uh for the training and travel would pretty much just be our local uh district CML meetings. So I don't know if if that looks good to everyone. Those match. So if we can get a.
I'll make a motion that we reduce line item.
Just say all, just say Legislative Section.
Oh, reduce the Legislative Section. Do both of them match? By 6,600.
Okay, we have a motion from Roberts, from Mosby. Call the vote.
Verone?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Mosby?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Mullins?
Yes.
Mayor Gudle?
Yes.
Okay, so those have been reduced. Um, move on to.
I don't know if there's a change under judicial.
Judicial. Nothing on, they're both the same.
Elections are the other.
Oh, general.
Um, do you, do you all know if you have changes coming up in any of these in finance or any of those, or do those look the same? Do you?
Well, there's, there's the uh. The education and travel and then there's the, what was it? The $3,800 reduction website costs. Oh, you're spreading it across four funds.
Yep, and and that one is Mines. I was trying to look into their proposal.
Oh. Well, it sounds like the answer. Looks like you guys agreed on. Well, then, I mean, I guess I'd make a motion that we make the amendment to have Education and Travel, a reduction from 3,000 to 1,000. This is the, this is essentially the um, this is essentially training for Stacy and perhaps Rebecca.
It was a reduction to 2,000, wasn't it?
You better what?
He's big sorry for that. Isn't it a reduction to 2,000? I can say that.
Yeah, from from three to two, from three to two.
From three to two. Oh, yeah, okay. I'm back with you.
Yeah, but three, but, oh, three to two, sorry.
And then.
So um, so a second is necessary. We're gonna reduce this one.
Motion for Mullins, second for Martinez. Call the vote.
Verone?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Mosby?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Mullins?
Yes.
Mayor Gudle?
Yes.
So that one is good.
We want the website development.
Yep.
So I motion that we move website development from 5,000 to.
Fifty one hundred.
Fifty one hundred to.
One thousand, two hundred and twenty-five?
One thousand, two.
I don't want to split hairs on this. I'm just gonna say we're we're talking about a $3,800 reduction in here. And I feel like this is gonna make accounting more complicated. That's my only point to that.
It's not that big deal. We're we're.
Okay.
We're we're used to splitting.
Okay.
Because this, to be honest with you, this cost is rightfully split. It should be split between the enterprise and the.
Then I make a motion that we approve the um the reduction in line item website development expense to um by $3,825.
So I think Martinez already had the first.
And I seconded.
Okay, we have the motion for Martinez, second for Mullins.
Verone?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Mosby?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Mullins?
Yes.
Mayor Gudle?
Yes.
So we're on the train season.
Um, we are on employee benefit within Finance Administration.
Um, we still have.
Which is the chiropractor expense, correct?
Well, they, that's a generalization. It's basically for birthday parties within the department or someone.
The fall party we had.
Right, if someone, a bereavement, if we give them a cake or a flower arrangement, those those are contingencies.
So everybody has to pitch in on parties now instead of the city.
I make a motion that we change employee benefit from 2,200 to zero.
I'll second.
Motion for Mullins, second for Roberts. Call the vote.
Verone?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Mosby?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Mullins?
Yes.
Mayor Gudle?
Yes.
Nothing in janitorial fund and police.
All right, now I'm, now here's I see a $60,000 reduction more than what is on Kyle's, right? Is that, oh wait, because I see Kyle's is 652,500 and yours is 592.
So that's one position, but if you look at Kyle's new proposal, it says 552.
Two positions.
But you cut two positions.
So Kyle's is what? 558?
Kyle's is 558.
So the question here is, do you want to cut one position or two positions?
I'm in favor of cutting one, but at the end of the day, wondering if it's huge, improving the roll down in this reverse. Start $800,000 over.
This is essentially gonna put you back to where you're mostly running one officer per shift again, correct?
It depends on how I do things. My goal is to minimize officers being solo. It depends on how I do things. My goal is to minimize officers being solo.
I'm sorry, Chief, for that, I'm sorry. I'm bad with hearing this. I don't mean to toss you around.
Everybody else wants to hear you too.
I don't anticipate the city to be in a position for quite some time to allow us to have two officers on a twenty-four hour. My goal is to minimize one officer to twelve hours per day for themselves. So that way we have, and this is, this is working twelve hours shifts where we would be able to keep twenty-four hour coverage. With B-shift and A-shift and a supervisor. And allowing us to have a dedicated officer. Keep in mind, we're also talking about, in the numbers for the Police Department, that eleven hits myself, code enforcement. And our state assistance two plus eight police officers. So he has to come from one of those.
Chief, we've had several pretty, pretty serious officer injuries this year. And that weighs on me. I know it weighs on you. They've gotten cards from me, I'm sure, members of the community and this council that express that. I'm ready to cry right now. It really bothers me. Please explain to us how this impacts officers in the.
Anytime around police officers working by themselves, they run the risk of having to run into a situation where they backup could be up to twenty minutes. Twenty minutes without company. This city, especially at its current state, I wish, I wish we could have two police officers on twenty-four seven. We just can't afford that. My goal is to minimize that. Unfortunately, although our positions are, we're still unable to have those people perform the duties because of where this situation is current. I'd love to maximize amount of police officers on the streets, but unfortunately, we're just not done.
Would it be fair to say that there's a direct correlation between the number of police officer positions cut to the risk officers are accepting on the street?
And then we're making cuts in the Police Department.
Do you expect?
Potentially.
I don't, I don't, I don't mean to ask you that, but it's important for the council and it's important for the citizens to know what's being discussed.
There is potential impact when we're talking about cutting positions. So to Councilman Mosby's point earlier this evening when she was talking about overturn. If we have somebody called off, we need to fill that spot. Currently, one side of our week, we're running sandal officers twenty-four seven, just because we don't have the staffing right now because of injuries, illnesses, et cetera.
Thank you so much for that. It's been highly open for people. Does anybody else have a question?
Cutting his positions will be just as, if not, I mean, cutting anyone in public safety is gonna be a detriment to the city. I mean, Kyle's, you know, presenting six positions on public safety. Dwayne's presenting three or four. I mean. None of those cuts are gonna benefit this in any way, shape or form. Those, those cuts will not benefit our citizens at all. None of them will. But we have to cut somewhere.
I don't wanna make a knock on wood statement, but I'm just gonna say, I believe cutting any position for the Fire Department will result.
Fire and police. Who said that?
I'm sorry, in the Police Department, has a very high probability of resulting in potentially life threatening injuries to our officers and our citizens. I mean, this is a credible statement, just based on what we've seen this year. And it may not be a dog bite, but like something like that, I'm not comfortable making any changes to this. No one else needs to comment. I just wanna say that I don't, I make a motion that we make no cuts to this budget, six fifty-two, five hundred.
I'll second that.
I would like to just say before we vote on that, you guys are dead set on not cutting the Police Department positions.
Let's not make it personal.
Absolutely dead, I'm not making it personal. I'm making a statement. You guys are dead set on cutting fire personnel and ambulance personnel, but you don't think that we should reduce a police officer. If we're gonna cut anyone, we need to cut somewhere from everywhere. Not just the Fire Department, not just police, not just.
We have a motion and a second.
And we have, and we have discussion.
And I am more than, I am more than. No, it's not. I am more allowed.
Something and it's a lie.
Pointing border.
Sitting here lying to me. No, she's been running about.
Councilman Mullins, you do not have before, it's discussion, there's been, you made a motion.
That's not a discussion.
I am absolutely allowed to make a statement about the motion that is on the floor. You have motioned to not eliminate any police positions.
That was a motion about my, you, you made a statement about my intent.
Councilman Mullins, you were not recognized.
I'm speaking anyways. You can call the police and have them arrest.
Pointing border.
You guys are both on the line.
I.
You guys, you guys, it doesn't mean you're passing border. You guys should stop debating.
Who is this speaking?
Okay, Nicole, go proceed and we do have a motion in second.
Yes, and cutting fire and not cutting police is a disservice to this town. Everyone needs to have a reduction, all departments.
If I may.
Not on this council. Any other, any other comments?
I might just add that I hate to see any positions for many departments, trades, sewer, first responders especially. I mean, you know, it's not just the police, it's all first responders, your life are on the line, you go out there. I'm just going back, three years ago, we got by with a chief and a captain. The citizens weren't happy, the crime showed it. We've come a long way since then, but things have to be done. Some changes are gonna have to be made, I'm sorry. And if we have to cut one position here and one position there or whatever it is, we're gonna have to do what we have to do. You know, citizens aren't gonna, we can't sit here and go to election for a tax increase or the middle age increase right now. We gotta do what we gotta do now for the budget to be in the black for next year. And we need the first responders, all of you, all one hundred percent of you need, need to be here, but we can't afford it. The city cannot afford it. I'm sorry. You know, some changes are gonna have to be made and some, it's hard, you know, but. If we gotta do away with the one from the police, I understand it's gonna put everybody else's life in jeopardy, not just the Police Department, but the citizens. Makes it harder on them, you know, on response time and everything. Totally understand. We're here to come up to a budget. We need to do what we need to do. And attacking each other is not gonna accomplish that.
All you've been talking about is cutting. I want to talk about introducing revenue.
Other discussion.
The only way to increase revenue is to increase taxes.
Code enforcement.
We're up here.
You have zero code enforcement in your town.
Nobody has zero.
My statement is just, and I, and I.
Want less fire?
Listen, I'm just speaking for myself.
How pretty values?
If an officer dies because he was patrolling the streets himself alone, and we knew the risk was present. And the chief told us that, it is our fault. It's our fault, period.
If we don't make it to an ambulance call and somebody dies, that's also our fault. We are negligent in that position.
Nicole, Nicole.
They all get to cut me off.
We have a motion in second.
Okay, um, my, my piece of this discussion is, is I do agree that we need to, if we're looking at making cuts, we need to make those. Across every department. I also heard that there was prior discussion and there is a, a path forward with some reductions there. I would not support reducing two from Fire, I mean, from Police Department. I think, you know, Police Department has been an area that we have known that we have needed to rebuild. And, you know, we've, we've done that over the last two years in increasing their budget, increasing their staffing, getting them up. So I definitely won't support reducing two, but I also think we need to make some there. So we do have to keep the motion in the second, and I don't remember what the motion was. Was it two?
No.
It's to keep the original budget of six fifty-two, five hundred.
Yes, no cuts there. Is that called a vote?
Verone.
No.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mosby.
No.
Roberts, no. Mullins.
Yes.
Mayor Gudle.
No.
I make a motion that we reduce the Police Department budget by sixty thousand, bringing it to five ninety-two, five, reducing one position from the Police Department.
Second motion. Okay, we have the motion from, any discussion? Motion from Roberts, second from Verone. Call the vote.
Verone.
Yes.
Martinez.
No.
Mosby.
Yes.
Roberts, yes. Mullins.
Hell no.
Mayor Gudle.
Yes.
Okay, so that one changes to five ninety-two. What's there? Employee retirement. Can we, can we consider those all adjusted, since the ones that are associated with upper employee?
Yeah.
Everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Make those adjustments?
I'm, okay.
That reduces.
They're all.
Following one, two, three, four, five, six adjustments, correct?
In the Police Department.
Or no, not the, not six, the training is the last.
Training and travel expense.
So those five line items.
Right.
So it would be salaries, overtime, holidays.
All the bets would be cut.
Paid call out. Medicare and medical and life insurance.
Correct.
By that show reduction.
And those are all directly tied.
Tied to the one position.
Kyle, have you spoken to chief about the reduction of two thousand from six thousand? And I'm sorry, in the next line item, the training and travel expense.
Uh, yeah.
We're, we're on, we'll go to that one now. Those other ones were tied kind of to personnel, so.
We've already, we've already taken care of, correct?
So, so now we're on the training and travel for police.
So the reduction in training and travel for police from six thousand to four thousand. And is that on both?
Uh, no, so I guess on yours, you're keeping that at six.
So Kyle, that's still at six.
Training and travel. Okay, excuse me, I'm catching up here.
Zero one zero four two one zero three.
It's, every one of these things, I've personally gone through with this, with chief, including the salaries and.
But was, was yours originally at four or is yours at six? I wanna know.
His originally is at six.
It's six.
Chief, can you please, how does this impact us? This, it's outside of, everyone else is up here. Will you allow us, please explain?
Training and travel. So for training and travel expenses, I believe this is where we would be able to purchase ammunition and practice our firearms, target stands, targets. Passing to practice or risk control, being able to send officers to training courses where they can become instructors. And bring that skill back and teach the department, stuff like that. We do try to utilize as much as possible the Southeast Coast region training funds to do some of these tasks.
Are these sort of standard operating procedures that Police Department utilizes in routine? Like they, like every Police Department does this, right? They're going out and practicing.
Yeah, so, yeah, correct. We, we are mandated by postal rules, we have to do certain trainings. And I believe we have to have a certain number of training hours per year and stuff like that. So we do need to have obviously some training. Looks like we're at thirty-eight, sixteen, fourteen for the year. If we had to turn to six thousand, we might be able to.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Are you comfortable with it going to four?
Can you make it happen?
Would you be more comfortable with it at five? I mean.
Let's.
This is a chance.
We, we, we have to do our part to make cuts, it's gonna five, please.
You're comfortable with that?
Yep, I'm comfortable with that. I think we can manage.
Then I'd make a motion that we adjust line zero one zero four two one, zero three one, zero three, three one five. Training child expenses from nine to five.
Six to five.
Six to five, I'm sorry.
Second.
Here we have the motion from Martinez, second from Roberts. Call the vote.
Verone.
Yes.
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 Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Mayor Gudle.
Yes.
Okay, what does that change our Police Department's budget?
Total would be one million fifty-one, six fifteen and eighty-eight cents. And that was the rest of everything in Police group.
I believe so.
Move on to Fire. So on Fire, I think the things to point out is, again, training and travel and then the other changes would be. Kind of right now here, two different options, one of cutting two positions and one of cutting three positions.
Making positions so we have our total.
If you want to start on training and travel, maybe we can start there.
Do you wanna skip salaries and go back and then the fact that that works?
Yeah, let's, let's start on.
Totally, we might agree.
Training and travel.
Yeah, let's do some ones that we might get somewhere on.
So moving now from fifty-six hundred to four thousand.
What's the line number on?
Uh, three fifteen, four two two oh three, three fifteen.
Right, sales. Last one is two.
Yeah.
Seven to, fifty-six to four. Fifty-six to four.
Ooh, yes. From fifty-six to four, I mean.
It's maybe sixteen.
I mean, I guess we'll ask the same question.
That's kind of.
What, what does?
What's your in-service look like?
What is your training and travel line item go to? Looks like this past year, it looks like on this, according to this, you've only spent three hundred and twenty-three dollars this year on training and travel.
Cause seventeen.
Yeah, we've had.
But seventeen last year.
You gotta remember that we also share costs with the rural fire protection districts. So some years. It would fall under the City of Rocky Ford and some years runs under the rural fire protection district. Cause they also help with paying for those as well. And you gotta remember, when we did our fire training in Trinidad, that was under the EMS budget. That was applied, so that expenditure got applied to EMS budget. So that gives you an idea of what that training cost for fire training is at ten thousand. The reason why we applied it under the EMS budget at that time is because we got the. Medicaid Medicare reimbursement program funds and we were able to allocate that training cost with those funds. So it typically costs around ten thousand for fire training. But as Chief Wallace stated, that, you know, everybody's gotta try to do their part. And, you know, we'll also do what we can and we'll look at grant opportunities, hundred percent, where there's no match. We also have the Colorado State Fire Fighters Foundation that can help assist with training costs that we're gonna start utilizing a lot more. And we'll figure out a way to make it work.
So are you comfortable with that going down to about four grand?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we reduce line item zero one zero four two two zero three, three one five from, what is it on this one?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six hundred to four thousand.
Okay. Call the vote.
Verone.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mosby.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Mayor Gudle.
Yes.
That one is good. Back up to salaries.
We're gonna, yeah, we're, we're backtracking back up to the, the hard question.
Yeah, there's nothing else down there on Fire, so now we're back up to the salaries. So the decision currently.
We're voting on all four of these, all four of these, sorry.
There's three.
Yeah. So currently there's.
Yeah, the three lower ones coincide with the.
Sorry, I can't get them.
Currently, we're budgeted for eight, eight personnel there, so there's two options, one of, um, three options, keep that, one of cutting to three, cut three, and one is cut two.
I mean, we could always throw in the option of cutting one. Felt the desire.
Sure.
Let's, let's start there, I make a motion that we only cut one position from the fire department.
My second.
Okay, my motion, second, call the vote.
Barone? Sorry, Barone?
Yeah. I mean, that means we get to cut to fifty thousand.
It's not more than that.
Agree, I mean, we're, we're starting somewhere, that's what we're doing.
I, yes.
Martinez?
No.
Mosby?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Mullins?
Yes.
Gudelay?
Yes. Yes.
And one that I'm noticing is overtime.
Yep.
So we currently have that at seventy-five and then you're proposing to take it to fifty.
Well, wouldn't that would reduce with the? Oh, I guess not.
No, it's, that doesn't, that doesn't, that's not, cannot be applied on that.
But that one vote did just take care of one-ten, one-twenty-five, two-ten, and two-seventy-eight.
Yep, the pension, the retirement, medical life insurance. And re, and retirement, all those would, are directly tied to those positions, so.
So they would just be reduced by half then?
But it's.
No, it, it would be, there's a, yeah, you have to multiply.
Like retirement, the city's on the hook for five percent of their retirement. Whether they take the full five percent or not, we, we, we have, we're liable, if they decide they want five percent, we have to. We also have to do the same with pensions, we're on eight percent there. So. It is.
So it would also include the pension line, I mean, I heard two-twenty-five.
No, because it wasn't written on your thinking.
Yeah, so that one would.
You corrected that to cut one position, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, just double check, and then can we get some information on how we're cutting?
How would we reduce?
How would, how are we reducing overtime by thirty-five, those are callouts, and do you have, is that, is that something that's possible?
To reduce overtime by twenty-five thousand from seventy-five to fifty?
Or twenty thousand?
I bet, yeah. Kyle's proposing fifty.
The line item is overtime, and it's, I was here, it says previous is seventy-seven, that's wrong number, I'm sorry. What am I looking at? Oh, annualized seventy-seven. Sorry, I'm on the wrong, oh, I'm sorry, never mind, I, I was looking at the wrong things, I thought we had a reduction.
We don't, but these all, this one, this one, this one, and this one plus pensions, all tied together.
Right, so we already took care of all of these, sorry about that. Everybody's good with the seventy-five. Well, yours says fifty.
But your proposed says fifty.
Okay, that's on the PD.
No.
Dwayne says seventy-five, yours says fifty.
Yeah, your proposed says fifty.
Okay, I'm good with seventy-five. You do seventy-five. I, it's.
We need to reduce things, are you okay, ready with fifty?
We're, 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 we're never going to get where we need to be.
That's why I'm saying, we need to reduce things, so if you want, that's twenty-five grand more.
I wish I could say that our calls are going to reduce. It's based off the call volume and how many people are available for calls at the time, and that also includes volunteer response. If we have a decrease in volunteer response, we're going to have an increase in over time. So, I can't say, I mean, it's possible if the call volumes drop.
Do we cut it by ten thousand?
But if you go by the history that I'm showing you, and what I provided to you with the call volumes, historically, they're not going down.
Yeah.
For the past five years.
And if we reduce it and we go over it, then we're just screwing ourselves.
Does that answer your question?
Or we just could be a little torn.
I'm okay with that, I just, trying to be workable.
Just to keep a running tally for everybody, the, the balance button is now something like four hundred fifty, not the dollar.
Okay, so, so we're leaving seventy-five, we're at seven one.
Yeah, let's go.
Okay. So we're moving into Wildland then, or Dispatch?
Dispatch. What?
Dispatch is the next department.
Oh, you're talking about the whole department is good from here on down?
We're moved, yeah.
Fire, yeah.
There was nothing else in Fire.
Oh, good.
Oh, the employee, no, no.
There's nothing.
Nope, that's it, sorry.
All right, good. Dispatch, we have, first one is a reduction in overtime, I presume that the conversation was that. I don't know, June, if you want to chime in on, on the reduction. Okay, well, currently we have budgeted for fifty thousand dollars of overtime.
Different than what we're, there's, so there's that, and then there's also this.
Okay, this is the one, I guess, was presented tonight.
That's Dwayne's present, presentation, this is Kyle's presentation.
The discussion we're having is between fifty thousand dollars and thirty-eight thousand dollars.
For the overtime?
Yeah.
Yes.
I, I can do my best, I think that's kind of where I'm falling in currently.
Is it going to be easier just because you have a larger department?
Possibly. And, and, you know, with public safety, overtime is a reality, right? Whenever there's an emergency, we cannot predict those. We can do our best to control it when it's controllable. You know, so that we have a little bit of a cushion there, which I think that we've done a pretty good job of doing that this year. Like I said, I, I will absolutely try my best to keep it within that.
While you're up here, there's just two other line items, so I, maybe we'll just get your feedback on both of them.
Okay.
Training and travel reduction, thirty-four hundred to twenty-four hundred. Problematic, possible, legal, but.
Um, okay, so training, I'm okay with that because I can, um, and I'm a one authority, or supports a lot of, will help support training.
My understanding is holiday work has been reduced because there's a plan to reduce the number of holidays, is that correct?
It's not. Kind of, yes.
Is it possible?
Yes.
To be at that thirty-eight and eight for the holiday, thirty-eight over thirty-eight.
The last one is employee benefit, five hundred to zero.
Hold on, so the.
Sorry.
That's okay. Um, holiday work is holiday work, I mean, they get time and a half when they work holidays, and we can't take holidays off.
That's what I'm saying.
But we're not getting, we're not giving them any extra. So we were paying them to have a holiday, and then they would get holiday time and a half when they work.
So it's not really possible, you said?
Not the holiday work, because I believe, isn't that the time and a half line? Okay, so we, we can't take holidays off, we can't close.
The only way to reduce the holiday pay is to reduce the amount of paid holidays the city.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, that is correct.
So we could reduce the number of paid holidays.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct, that is correct. But, I mean, there's been, you know, like I said, we can't take the holiday off, we are not able to close.
Thank you so much. I don't know if there's any questions or anything else you want to share about your budget.
Yeah, so I, we've taken away the both employee, what was listed as employee benefit, so I had already taken away that five hundred and reduced my other one from fifteen to five hundred, and that was just for public engagement, so we'll find other ways to do that as well.
I would be happy to have you send that to us as well.
So, so I think, um, we can, we can make this work.
Thank you.
Just like I said, if you're okay with the thirty-eight on the overtime, but you are not okay with reducing the holiday work at this time.
That is correct, yeah, we can't, I mean, we're not going to close, like.
Then I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and make the changes as suggested for all dispatch expenditures minus the holidays worked dispatch.
I'll second that. And for clarification, that brings dispatch overtime down to thirty-eight thousand and training and travel to twenty-four hundred and employee benefit line nine-two-five to zero.
Call the vote, please.
Barone?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Mosby?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Mullins?
Yes.
Mayor Gudelay?
Yes.
For Dispatch, we're on to Wildland Fire. And then Chief, did you have something?
Yes, uh, looking at the budgets, I'm going to fall in line with everybody else, let's cut my employee benefit to zero, please.
We didn't do that to you?
Could you please do that?
It's because it was hidden up top instead of bottom. No, yeah, I see it.
I think it's the right thing to do, if you cut it to zero, please.
Where is that one?
How was it?
Oh, I see it, it's the last line item on page eight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
And anything that we, as a council, I, I'm not necessarily, but anything that we, or myself or the chamber can help you guys with any of your public engagement or anything like that, please feel free to reach out to me. I have a board of volunteers and things like that, and we would be more than happy to help you guys engage with the community.
Thank you.
Do we still need to do a motion?
Yeah, make a motion to change police expenditures, employee benefit from one thousand to zero.
I'll second. Call the vote.
Barone?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Mosby?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Mullins?
Yes.
Mayor Gudelay?
Yes. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks for catching that.
We're down to Wildland Fire. Just remember note on this one, the deployment line item is already, well. We've already proved that the Wildland revenue will be, um.
Right, yeah.
One point two-five percent of whatever is deployment.
Right, so we're keeping the program, so we, that's. Or in other words, that deployment cost will be eight percent of revenue. Okay.
So we're at, so.
No, there's still salaries.
You would be averaging the, aren't we going to put a number in there?
No.
Aren't you going to average that out?
For salaries?
We need to average this, we need to average this deployment number.
Yeah, yeah.
From the last few years.
We're at four hundred thousand, because that's what was presented, so it's times point eight, which would be, I should be able to do that in my head, but. Times point eight, it's three hundred and twenty thousand.
We don't expect any head math after ten o'clock.
So.
So the number was what?
Three hundred and twenty thousand and a half fifty-five.
It's down here.
It's deployment.
It might be on the next page for you.
You know it's deployment. There it is.
It's nine twenty-two, so it's like almost the last one.
Vote, vote, is that number?
Three twenty, three hundred and twenty thousand.
So that's already been done. Yep.
He missed you.
To still discuss, remind, or remains the salaries for Wildland Fire, which I, I believe is like a billing specialist, is that right, Point? We, we're zero from thirty thousand. Right. I think the cat has appeared.
And that would be a new position.
It would have been. Okay, so. Nobody's discussing that, then I'd make a motion and approve salary adjustment from thirty thousand to zero dollars, which is just a reduction of position that hasn't, we're not going to fill.
That we are just, I, I will second that.
Motion from Mullins, second from Roberts, call the vote.
Barone?
Yeah, yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Mosby?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Mullins?
Yes.
Mayor Gudelay?
Yes.
And the next one's joined with that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we take your vote.
And then, and then for deployment, where does that land?
Three twenty. So do we make a motion to put?
So we're.
Did we? Oh, because it correlates to.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to just clarify that if you make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we are going to adjust the deployment line item, which is zero one zero four two five zero nine nine two two to reflect three hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Second. So the seconds are, I'm reading ahead.
I want, I want to definitely have a discussion on this, because, you know, we're. So you just made a motion to change deployment expenses from a hundred and thirty thousand to, I don't remember what it was.
Three hundred and twenty.
Because that's, we said we were going to average the last few years.
That's the way to average, yeah.
To come up with our potential.
That's what it shows in twenty twenty-five, it only shows in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. It's an educated guess based off historical data, I think it's the budget, that's how you do it. So we've got a motion and a second, is there more discussion here?
No. Call, call the vote.
Barone?
Yes.
Martinez?
Can I take that back?
I'm sorry, was that a no from Martinez?
No, from Martinez.
Mosby?
No.
Roberts?
Did I ju, what did I just do? We have to, we have to, if we're going to do that, it has to be a decent number in order to. There is no way we're only going to spend a hundred thousand dollars on, or a hundred and thirty on deployment.
That's why.
We have to increase that, yes. No, I don't. I'm good.
We want to lie and say we're going to spend a hundred and thirty when we're going to spend three hundred and twenty.
Just meaning of.
Based on historical data, we're going to spend three hundred and twenty thousand dollars on deployment.
So you want to vote yes on this measure, because that's what this measure says, is that we're going to change it to say three hundred and twenty?
If that's what we, that's what we discussed earlier, was that we were going to take an average of that to put a number in this.
Yes.
To make it accurate. And that is the average number, which would make this accurate to what they are saying it's going to be.
Is that a yes from Roberts?
Yes.
Yes, it's a yes from me.
Okay, all right, Mullins?
Yes.
Mayor Gudelay?
Um, no.
Three and three.
Yeah, um, yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm kind of taken aback, you know, if we calculate how much time has been talked about the Wildland Fire program and, you know, how that is not in the best interest. You know, this would effectively increase that budget up to three hundred and seventy-five thousand, so I don't know if the intent was off there or if the calculation was off.
No, the, the calculation's dead on.
The calculation is taking the average of the last.
But it's based on four hundred thousand, do you recall it? Oh, sure, it's based on four hundred thousand, but we couldn't agree to reduce that before, so.
But we're basing it off of the actuals from twenty twenty-four and the year-to-dates of twenty-five.
Well, we're basing it off the four hundred thousand that was presented in the budget, which is, is probably close to one twenty twenty-five.
What, what I noted, what I noted up above, and I might have heard this wrong, but what I noted, what we approved under the revenue was that it would be one point, it would be twenty-five percent more than whatever the expense was.
The revenue would be, yes.
So the, if the expense is three hundred and twenty thousand. Then the expense would be twenty.
In my spreadsheet, so I'm tracking this, I, I did, equals sum, one point two-five times the sal that the expenses are in, so.
No, they, they.
That is, that is a hundred and thirty thousand, right now, currently, that would be a hundred and thirty times one point two-five.
It'd be about one sixty, so, but that would be your revenue value, your revenue.
Correct.
Right, but we agreed that the revenue's four hundred thousand, so what?
No, we.
We agree on the.
Okay, so.
On a calculation.
Okay, no, that's fine, so what do we want to do, put it at one, we want to say one thirty and then revenue goes down to a hundred and fifty? Colin seemed to think two-eight is a more realistic number.
Okay.
And that's what he said, right?
Two-eighty for a revenue, which means our expenses would be. Two-eighty for a revenue, which means our expenses would be eighty percent of that, so take two-eighty, right?
So, two-eighty would, two-eighty would be
I'm not doing math.
Expected revenue on a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollar deployment expense?
That doesn't follow historical trends. Historical trends are that our revenues are
Put us at two-twenty-four.
A hundred-and-twenty-five percent of deployment costs, okay? So...
Because just to back us up, I have this at two, I have Wildland revenues at two-eighty-nine, um, and that was voted no. We voted on zero
Which means it includes the...
We voted on two-eighty-nine, and then we voted on a percentage of whatever the expense is.
I, I voted to tie revenues to, um, but it...
By one-point-two-five.
Well, however, however way that you wanna break this down, as long as the revenue remains the same, I'm fine. If you wanna say that we're gonna spend a hundred thousand, a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars, then you multiply that by one-point-two-five, so one-hundred-and-thirty times one-point-two-five, then revenues go down to one-sixty-two-five.
Right, okay, but the fire department is saying the realistic revenue number is two-hundred-and-eighty thousand.
And I'm saying...
Which would make two-twenty-four our
Your deployment expense.
Our deployment expense.
So then, is that the, would you like to make a motion to that point, to change both lines to those values?
I make a motion that we change the deployment revenue, deployment expenditure line to two-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand and the Wildland
Revenue.
Revenues to two-eighty.
I second it.
Okay, I'll call the vote.
Yeah, I'll call the vote.
Barone?
Yeah, yes.
Martinez?
No.
Mosby?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Mullins?
Yes.
Mayor Gudelay?
No.
Two-eighty, kidding.
Okay, so we, now we have revenues at what, two-eighty?
Two-eighty.
Two-eighty, and expenditures of two-twenty-four.
And this is a separate motion, so this one is okay, because we did have a motion that failed to set those revenues at two-eighty. But, so this is a new motion that passed.
That sets it at two-eighty. Yeah, that sets it at two-eighty and sets the expenses at two-twenty-four.
Yeah, well, we just caught up to it, but someone was on the right track.
It just went full circle.
Three hours ago.
When we got there.
Oh, is the revenue the next one?
No, it was at the beginning! Two-twenty-four.
Yeah, take yes as an answer and move on.
Yeah, let's just keep going.
So that's, that's it with that, moving over to ambulance now? It's not, we're, we're, we're seven-hundred thousand dollar deficit when we're done with this. Yeah, we're not, are we moving to ambulance now?
Ambulance is next.
Still funding that.
We don't have it.
Why is ambulance revenue on the same? Is it something that ambulance revenue?
It is, it's a general...
It's just carried.
Okay, so... So this is a correct dealer, because we moved, we didn't, we didn't move that grant, so that's still a three-fifty something, right?
The ambulance grant?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, so we're, yeah, we're, we're only going to expenses here.
So the ambulance grant is still a three-chickety-three. Okay, are we jumping down to that?
Now, we're, we're at the top of the ambulance.
Okay.
So we currently have
Good reasons, I have no idea what I put in.
We just have the option of keeping it as is, so that salaries would be three-hundred thousand, um, cutting one position or cutting two positions.
Two? Is that what Kyle said?
I was at one, with us out, at two-fourteen-eight-hundred. Not last week, but right now, I'm at two-fourteen-eight-hundred.
Oh, that's, that's only one position? Okay.
How do you do two-fourteen-eight-hundred?
Yeah, because this one says two-forty at sixty, it wasn't for a position.
Is it a higher-paying position that we're talking about?
I'm seeing one-seven-six.
My salary spreadsheet's on my computer, and that's where I pull those numbers from, based off of the people that, because we don't know who it's gonna go.
No.
So it, it's gonna, I mean, don't, this, this could probably fluctuate anywhere from ten to twenty thousand dollars, depending on if, if we have to make a cut, that, that's, you know, who it is, and who knows?
So on your, uh, your reduction
Yeah, I went, I went...
On your paper for today is a reduction of a hundred-and-twenty-three thousand-two-hundred.
I had three-hundred thousand last week, and I'm at two-fourteen-eight, so that's a, that's two-eighty.
Sorry. I was looking at the revenues. My bad. I'm not...
Okay, um, I had the math in my head there for a second.
I'm so sorry, I screwed that up.
That's all right. It's, it's about eighty-five thousand dollars, it's about what salary we're gonna be in the, we're gonna be...
I'd like to add something on that, um, it's gonna be really tough to be able to continue the same revenue you guys got listed on here with less staff.
How many EMTs do you have?
What do we need to reduce the revenue to, if we reduce one position?
I don't know if you've got a formula you've got in place, because this is the first time I've had to do this, so I don't know what the revenues would need to reduce that, if you're to reduce the position, we're gonna have to reduce the revenues.
How many positions are there currently?
Uh, four, and the EMS, and those were, those were designed for the IFT program.
Okay. So if we reduce this, this one position, then it sounds like we should reduce revenue by twenty-five percent.
Well, we're, essentially what you're saying is we can say goodbye to IFT revenue.
I don't think we'll be able to keep up, we're losing fire staff and...
So that's essentially sixty-five thousand dollar loss.
That's sixty-five thousand, just to go like... And then you've also gotta look at nine-one-one revenue, because we also, the fire department, the fire guys also run on the ambulance. We're gonna have to reduce the ambulance fees collected, too. Those revenues will have to be reduced, because I can't obviously run calls with less staff and make more money.
No, I agree.
And we'd be the only fire department that would have to be required to cover all our losses with revenue, uh, collect, uh, just from fees for service credit. You'd be the only fire department in the nation that would have to do it.
Good point.
Well, but you give mill levy to cover some of that.
No, we don't. No, if you figure mill levy, no, we don't, the mill levy's actually just absorbed in the general fund revenue.
No. But the rural has a mill levy to cover. But that doesn't affect this.
Doesn't affect this.
And our, our own budgets, they don't have...
Right.
They share a lot of the costs, but that's already figured.
I don't know what else we're supposed to do then.
I, I, I agree, I...
I make a motion that we make no cuts to ambulance.
I'll, I'll support that a hundred percent, I'll second that. Not that, I don't know where the money's coming from, but I, I agree that public safety is of utmost importance here.
We're gonna have to revisit all of this.
I agree, we are.
We're not gonna get into it.
All right, but this is what had to happen.
It'd be closer, dude, I hope.
I second, or, he motioned, no, Mullins, Mullins motioned.
Clarifying, is this no cuts to just the salaries and benefits, or no cuts to ambulance period?
Uh, just the salaries and...
Just the salaries and benefits.
Okay, Mullins and Roberts?
Yes.
Call the vote.
Barone?
Yes.
Martinez?
No.
Mosby?
I'm staying.
Roberts?
Yes.
Mullins?
Yes.
Mayor Gudelay?
Um, no.
Three-to-two, one extension.
Is that a pass then?
Yes.
Okay, so this one stays the same?
Which is the three-hundred?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else on there that you can do?
The other one was the training, training and travel.
From five to three, yeah, the medical life.
So that's reducing your, uh, training and travel from five to three under ambulance. Right?
If you want, if you wanna share similar on that one? So I'd like to add that there, there could be some potential to offset that difference with the community hospital board, to help us with some of that training reimbursement, so that, that cuts fine.
Same, you're comfortable with that? I will make a motion that we cut line item zero-one-zero-four-two-six-zero-two-two-seven-eight, nope, wrong.
Three-one-five.
Three-one-five, not two-seven-eight, three-one-five, from five thousand down to three thousand.
I'll second.
Okay.
Call the vote.
Barone?
Sorry. Me? Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Mosby?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Mullins?
Yes.
Mayor Gudelay?
Yes.
Next item is...
We've already voted on that, a different line item, so it's four-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Arguably, it should be increased to six-hundred, because we know that there's a cost increase that...
That one's, that one's, we've already covered that one.
Yes, I'm just locating here.
What do you guys have to mention?
Oh, ambulance.
Oh, right, the replacement?
And it has to stay at the
Four-fifty?
Four-fifty.
Move on to Public Works?
Kyle, can you refresh us what your plan is here?
Yes, this was, I mean, we, we made pretty significant cuts with it, with Rick in, in, in this department. We, we cut this down a hundred and something thousand dollars.
Part of that did come from a redistribution, though, of salaries, correct?
It did, but it's, it's not that big, I mean, it's not that much.
It was thirty percent of the redistribution and twenty percent reduction.
Close to two-hundred over there across those, and puts those...
Why do I show an increase, though? Why do I see a ninety-two-two to, to increase to two-twenty?
Because he re-put those people back into the general fund, instead of, so if they are not working in water or sewer, and there's a water department and a streets department, the people that are within that streets department can no longer pull their salaries from the enterprise funds, except for garbage.
How does that help our budget? It looks like we spent a hundred...
It just redistributes everything again.
Well, yeah, but we're getting rid of, or should, does this include the general funds on currently?
We need to get it on this.
Or is this replacing those two?
Because it cuts us in the revenue, so this, this would only work if we had a streets department.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, and then we're talking about that here, yeah, but we've, so we've had this discussion with the attorney.
Right. That is before we made that answer.
It wasn't clear, hasn't, but, all right.
Agreed, so, and, and that, and that didn't, we, we already voted on that, and it didn't.
So I'd like to leave, I, I motioned that we leave this, the one that Kyle gave us, the way it is, because that's a, what?
That cuts two positions.
No, no, that's why I just asked him.
Kyle's does.
What he gave us, was given to us when Rick was here, before the two men that we just have... The number, um, the first, I'm at, I'm at ninety-two-two in my new one, and that's not counting those two positions that we cut. I've got a total of two-sixty-one, oh-six-nine and three cents.
Where the hell's everybody getting these numbers from? That's the total. Okay.
Is that what you get in the bottom, three-sixty-one total?
That's less, oh, no, that's the new one, yeah, yes, you're right. So that was, and that's a huge, like, five different spreadsheets going on here. Hundred-and-thirty, hundred-and-something? Less than what it was?
Yes, because those employees were moved over to other funds.
I understand that, but it's still, uh, they sort of belong to those funds. That's why, I mean, that's where they belong anyway, that's doing it right, my...
Yeah, I disagree, I think this one...
The way it's sitting now, yes.
I think this one needs a fundamental change, I think this needs to change from Public Works to a Streets and Maintenance Department. My changes, all those changes you would see there, um, reflect that, um, so that's kind of the, the pathway here, is, is that option as presented, um, but it would require a restructure and a refocus of, of what those employees are doing, which is all streets and sidewalks, um, for, for this to work, it, it wouldn't work if they were also doing water or sewer.
Stacy, you're the city manager, how do you, uh, how do you feel about restructuring Public Works, Public Safety, Water?
To be honest, I'm still processing it, I...
Yeah, I, I know you're a processor, but processing time's over.
I, I, I hear you. I, I, I can't answer this right now, I...
I think if, if we're gonna be honest, and we're gonna do the misstowards of the tax dollars, that if the restructure is something that we need, believe needs to be done, that's something we need to look at doing over the next twelve months and bring this to next year's budget. We're right now at a time bunch that needs to be figured out, proven. We don't have the time to figure out, or, yeah, I mean, if you had given this months ago, this may be something we would look at logistically, and, you know, but I think that that would be something we should look at next year.
Yeah, no, I, I hear you, and also, um, I came with the proposal that gets us to zero.
Well, so did Kyle.
Okay, and, and close to zero, uh, or whatever that looks like, but that's already been shaken up.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, this, this only works if it's done this way, if it is only pieces of it, it, it doesn't work.
Well, just to be clear, if you do everything you want in Public Works, right now, we're at like seven-hundred thousand dollar deficit, based on all the other votes that we've made today, so, it won't, no, yes, I mean, we just, yeah, because you counted removing ambulance as a four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar line item, I mean, I mean, you gotta, you
Well, we added the four-fifty.
You got a four dollar right there.
And put in three-fifty for revenue.
It's not four-fifty, it's ninety, it's ninety.
How is it ninety when we...
Because you put in an expense and a revenue, and it cancels out three-hundred thousand
In that, in that one line item, but we, we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars in all of these combined.
Where are we at right now with current changes? Just out of curiosity.
Just doing it as... Yes.
I'll, I'll take the over on that, yeah, I'd give for one, put me in for five.
Just, uh, just a deployment cost increase of one-hundred thousand dollars, reduction in revenue, one-hundred-and-sixty thousand, that's three-hundred grand right there, just that one, just those two, three-hundred thousand dollar difference.
And that's why I was, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, yeah.
I know we're nowhere near balance, like, that's not even...
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's like, this, this then here is not gonna make a difference, and I wanna circle back to you, Dan, because we've got some back and forth up here on the council about whether or not your answer was clear. Is it your opinion that this would be advisable to take the one percent road tax and use it to cover salaries? Is it advisable? Is it advisable?
I, I think that, um, I, I, it would be my opinion that it's, it's too close, you know, it's not, that, no, it would, it would not be advisable. I think it, it is at least a potential for a paper violation, I, I understand his ambiguity with the language, but, um, you know, it'd be my opinion that it, I don't, I don't think we could use it for, for salaries.
With, with everything that's been said, I.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna just answer the question that was asked, um, this currently puts us at a six hundred and twenty thousand dollar deficit. So we went backwards.
Correct.
But let's keep on moving forward.
Backwards, mate.
We have to get to a point at which we agree, and then we have to figure out where we're going from there.
Well, what I'm doing is I'm eating chips, and I'm watching you guys blow up the budget by millions of dollars, because you fundamentally don't understand what the problem is. And then eventually, we're gonna have to rely on what the auditor said, our, our budget experts here, and our city manager.
Mr. Mullins, Mr. Ross, did you, I, I, I think I might have missed any recommendations you brought.
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna make a recommendation.
Recommendations that we've learned over the last three months as we've been working on this budget.
I move that we vote on and approve the.
I'm asking you, how did, how did you assess this to bring recommendations?
What are, what are you saying, like, I'm doing nothing up here?
He's just asking if you have a proposed budget.
My proposal is that we rely on the city manager that we hired and pay a significant amount of money, and our accountant, to do their jobs. And our auditors, which all said the exact same.
And we were presented a deficit of five hundred and seventy-eight, and, and we're supposed to work from that.
No, we're supposed to work up what he brought in today, because we did not give him an opportunity.
But we were given this with less time to review than, than Dwayne.
This would have been brought in, this would have been brought in if.
Actually, I, I saw most of this when I came and spoke to him.
I did not see this until I was handed this at six o'clock tonight.
I knew we were.
Dwayne's, I saw a copy of an hour before that, so I was given one copy at five o'clock and one copy at six o'clock.
Well, thank God, we can make a decision on nine pages of Excel files for four million, four fifty million dollar budget one hour before the meeting.
And again, I would ask you, what recommendations have, have you got that helps us look at this and helps us?
How is that relevant, let's vote.
Get this.
What is the point you're trying to make? I, oh, I, oh, okay, I gotta, oh, we should reduce this, and we should reduce that, and then, but otherwise, I need to just shut the fuck up, is what you're saying.
You're out of order, Mullins.
No, I think you're out of order.
You're out of order.
Destruction of public property. You gonna punch me while you're at it? You think threatening me? No, 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 seriously, you have threatened us multiple times. Yeah.
Have I?
Yeah, you have.
He has?
Yeah, where, where do you get that, so?
Right friggin' now, everybody saw it.
That, that was, that was calling order.
Show of hands.
Point of order, back to what we're budget.
Well, we're gonna budget a new gavel.
What?
I'm, I'm pretty sure Dwayne will handle that on his own.
Yeah, sure.
He spends plenty of his own hard-earned money purchasing things for this council.
Let's, let's, let's get back to this.
So do you, so do you.
My main motion would be.
But doesn't Nick have a motion on, Nick has a motion on the floor.
What's your motion?
My motion is that we approve what Kyle handed us.
I second it.
Okay, we have the motion and the second.
The whole thing, is that what you're saying?
Yes, for public works, which is a hundred and thirty thousand dollar decrease.
Make sure you're specific about that.
Public works portion, yes.
Call the vote.
Barone.
No.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mosby.
Yes.
Roberts.
No.
Mullins.
Yes.
Mayor Gudle.
No.
Okay, that motion fails with the tie. You know, getting pissed off at each other and just saying we're gonna pass something isn't helping the city. We need to work on this, we need to work on. This helps the city, this shows me a department head who busted his butt to cut every dime he could, just like that department head back there, they've been the same thing. We can't say that for all department heads, that's the problem we're having.
You guys, I, can I make a motion for a ten-minute recess?
I'll second that, I, I think the tension in this room is just a little high, and we could all use just a bit of a breather.
Okay, we're just gonna call it a vote. A motion and a second on a recess, ten minutes.
Barone.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mosby.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.